Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and reconvene the special meeting of Folsom City Council for Tuesday, July 25, 2017. Any final action to report out of closed session, Mr. City Attorney?
No final action, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so with that, we will adjourn the special meeting of Folsom City Council and convene the regular meeting of Folsom City Council for Tuesday, July 25, 2017. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Howell?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here.
Gaylord?
Here.
Morin?
Here.
And Miklos is absent.
Right. So would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I guess we'll start off any agenda updates this evening.
And you have one agenda update tonight. There are amendments to Item 6A.
Okay. Okay, so with that, next item.
Your next item is business from the floor. You have one speaker request from Cara Walker.
Okay, Cara? Is Cara here?
I'm not sure if you can read the name.
Oh. Oh, Cara?
Yeah, I don't have to do the handwriting.
I think we just pronounced her wrong. I think your handwriting's fine.
No, this is under business from the floor.
Oh, boy, too many people named Cara. Okay. Or Kara. So what was that again?
She was business from the floor. I don't see her in the audience.
Cara Walker? Is Cara here? Can she hear me out in the hallway? Cara? Okay, all right. Well, we'll table that for the time being. Okay, and that was our only request on business from the floor?
That was your only request.
Okay, very good. Okay, moving on here.
So next is your consent calendar. You have request to speak on Item 6A.
Okay, so we will...
I'll move B through H.
Okay, so...
Second to that.
Items B through H moved by Vice Mayor House, seconded by Councilmember Gaylord. Please call the roll.
Council members Howell?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes, and Item 6A pulled for separate comment and vote.
Okay, so Item 6A is ordinance 1276. This is an uncodified ordinance of the city approving amendment number one to the first amended and restated Tier One DA between the City of Folsom and Folsom Heights LLC relative to the Folsom Heights subdivision project. It's before council tonight for second reading and adoption.
Okay, thank you, Krista. So with that, so we have a number of requests to speak here, and our policy is, you know, three minutes per speaker, so we'll just start off and work through the names here.
Okay, looks like your first request is from Donna Menzer.
Okay.
And Donna will be followed by Ed McGowan.
Good evening, Donna.
Good morning, good evening. My name's Donna Menzer. I live at 2119 Stonebrier Drive, and I've been here for the last couple of meetings. And I have to say, the first meeting, I thought it went really well. We all agreed it should be that the road for Stonebrier, that's what we're talking about, correct, should be an EVA access road. And we had a lot of people from our community, and we all agreed, and the people that were building, they agreed too. Then the next week, we came, and it was completely different. And there were only a few people here, and the argument that they put forth after I got to thinking about it, it didn't seem like a good argument. They were talking about the emergency vehicle access road being a real road for safety reasons. I'm all about safety, but Eldorado Hills, half of Eldorado Hills is gated community, and a lot of Folsom is gated community too, so why would that be such a big deal?
I just want to clarify, the first meeting, I think, that you came to is actually the Planning Commission.
Okay.
This is only the second time that the councils heard this item.
Okay.
So the first meeting you went to was a different group of people.
Okay, well, a lot of us were, we don't do this a lot, so maybe we were confused because it seemed like we had an agreement. Everybody thought, oh, good, that went really well. But then we didn't have an agreement, and the next meeting, a lot of us weren't here, and everything was different. And the argument that they gave was that it was not going to be safe. But once again, there's so many gated communities in Folsom and Eldorado Hills, Four Seasons right around the corner being one of them, and maybe they shouldn't have a gate because I think they need emergency vehicle access more than other people, don't you think?
That's not our jurisdiction.
Well, okay, I'm sorry. But I just felt like it was an insincere argument that they did, and they do this a lot, and we don't, so we didn't know what was coming. And I'm glad you guys are listening to us today, but is it done, or do we still have an opportunity?
Well...
Because when you voted, yeah, we were like...
What we have before us is, and maybe I'm going to lean on my city attorney here to explain where we're at with this.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if I may, what's before the council tonight is a second reading and adoption of the ordinance pertaining to the amendment to the development agreement. What the council did two weeks ago was approving the rest of the entitlements, including a map, the subdivision map, that has the Prima Drive laid out as the street per council direction. That is not agendized for tonight's meeting. The only thing agendized is the second reading and adoption of the development agreement, which is a contract between the city and the developer freezing the standards, policies, and rules and regulations in place at the time of the agreement so that the development can proceed for X number of years.
Right, right. Thank you. So that was, yeah, that was my understanding as well, so...
Can you explain that to me? What exactly did that mean?
Yeah, it's, yes, yeah, land...
Maybe I'll give that another try. Thank you, ma'am. So the council action two weeks ago pertaining to this item was for the rest of the entitlements for this project. Those items have been decided and done by the council. There's no further review.
So what happened two weeks ago happened?
Correct.
And we're here, why?
We're here because there's item agendas for the remaining portion of the entitlement, and that's the only item...
Is that the EVA road we're talking about?
Negative, that is the development agreement freezing the rules and regulations and policies in place as of the date of the agreement, development agreement, so that the developer can proceed with the project with certainty that the city will not change rules years later.
So basically, I have nothing...
Yes, correct. And so I was emailed as, you know, as this agenda was published, I was emailed by, I believe, Stephanie and was wondering if we would pull this off a consent for discussion, not really getting into the details of exactly what piece of this proceeding was. So I said, absolutely, we'll pull it for discussion in a separate vote, but as explained, the details related to the EVA road are, you know, that's not being addressed this evening. So that's done, yes.
Okay, well, I still have to say, I felt like it was done not right. Just, do you agree at all? I mean, we were all here, we all thought that it was a good thing, everything felt like it was settled, and then the next week...
Right, and our Planning Commission is a recommendation body to the city council, and so, you know, we had those Planning Commission notes in front of us from that meeting, but a majority of us up here felt like it was just too much of a reach on a compromise for the, you know, the emergency services access across that road.
I feel it's probably going to have more accidents because people come down that road, and it's going to be a bigger problem than you guys anticipate.
I...
It's going to be a four-way stop now, and then there's going to end up being a light there because there's going to be accidents.
Great. Okay. Yeah, go.
I want to make a comment right now, okay? I had the same question, and I went to the attorney this afternoon, okay, to find out whether you could speak or could not speak. As I understand it, the way he described it to you, he described it to me. However, I asked him, is there any way that, in my mind, way back, when we took an action, it wasn't completely in concrete, there's a way to reconsider it. But the way you reconsider it has to be somebody that voted for it, not against it, and then it has to go back to the council as a reconsideration, okay? And then it has to be, again, accepted by the council to rehear it, okay? Now, that can't be the same night tonight, and I hate to say that because you all come out and it seems like another push to keep you away from talking. I personally have no problem hearing it again, because I only heard it one day before we voted on it. And I voted for it because I felt that the fire considerations outweighed the testimony that night, you know? But I knew about the 75 people that went to the Planning Commission, I was briefed on that. So that's an option, but that doesn't help tonight as far as, I don't know, I don't think we can hear it.
Yeah, no, there's nothing before us related to that issue.
But can we not look at it, if the, I hate to say, if you want to go back again, that...
Well, I, you know, you know, I suppose we could get a clarification on, you know, what it would take to revisit that, but my understanding is that's not a possibility.
Well, it wasn't agenda, though, was it?
So...
Order one.
So, you know, related to what Ernie was just bringing up, if he could address that.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council's body took action two weeks ago on the rest of the entitlement for the Folsom Heights project. If the council wishes to reconsider the council's action, the council needs to have it agendized as an agenda item on a future city council meeting agenda so that it can be specifically stated and noticed that it is an item to reconsider the action the council took, which is not on tonight's agenda. So under the Brown Act, we cannot hear the reconsideration tonight, but it is possible, if the council wishes to do that, to place on a future agenda, but that would require council action.
Okay. Yeah. And a council action to reconsider, that's not on the agenda either?
I thought about it right away after I said council action.
Wouldn't somebody then...
On the agenda item.
Let Steve answer this.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, ma'am. It would require council action on an item that's agendized, properly agendized under the Brown Act.
All right, that's what I figured was the case, so...
You know, I understand...
But Steve, how does that happen? Doesn't somebody have to make the request for the reconsideration to put it on the agenda?
The mayor and the city manager work together under our city charter to create the agenda, so it's entirely possible, if the council wants to do that, you can place on agenda, but...
Now, not to argue with you, Steve, but my understanding is that in order for the reconsideration to take place, somebody that supported the original action, a council member?
Correct.
Would have to make the request, and I believe that there would have to be a second on the request.
Ernie, are you making that request?
No, but, no, no, wait, hold on a second here, because we're diving into something that is not agendized, so...
No, I'm asking, Steve, what the process is, that's all.
The process is, yes, Mr. Vice Mayor and Mr. Mayor, the process is simply add an item to a future council agenda.
I don't, I don't believe, I'm disagreeing with you, I don't believe that's how reconsideration works.
No, no need to take action to reconsider because it's not agendized for you to take action on that tonight.
Well, let me, let me clarify again, Andy. I'm willing to, as, I voted for it, therefore I clarify as what Carrie described, because I understood it the same way.
Right, you might want to look that up, because I believe I'm right.
But I would be willing, as the one that voted for the road, to get the full structure of all the people. I'm all for people talking, I have no problem, and I was sort of disappointed from 75 to, say, about three speakers and maybe seven people. I'm willing to do it. I'm not saying I'm going to change my mind, it depends on what comes up, and whether I change my mind makes any difference, because there's five of us. But I'm willing to request to you, Andy, that we agendize an item, and then the council can decide if they want to hear it. Is that right, Steve? I can do that? I mean, we can't hear nothing now, and we can't take an action, but we can take, I can make the request to have the council consider re, to relook at it again.
Under the Brown Act, any action the council wishes to take has to be agendized first. So, yes, sir, you can make a request, but...
I can ask, Andy, the city manager...
But that doesn't mean it will be agendized.
Right, okay. Okay, so off to a rough start here. So, next speaker, please.
Your next speaker is Ed McGowan, and Ed is followed by Matt Seitz.
So I can speak about this, or I can't?
Yes, yep, you can speak to this.
So, first thing I would like to do is request that you guys reconsider it, do not adopt it, and make it back to an EVA. I live right on the corner of that intersection. My backyard fronts that intersection. I was not notified of the meeting two weeks ago, although my house and my yard is less than 100 feet away from the proposed road, and I don't see how that's possible, but I wasn't notified, I haven't been notified of anything. That neighborhood is going to put an extra 2,000 trips per day on that road going in past my house. That's 60,000 trips per month, that's 720,000 trips per year, and in the five years that it's going to take to get that fire station built, that's 3,600,000 trips going by my house, extra. I walk my dog along that road a lot, and I've nearly been hit probably five, six, seven times in the eight years I've lived there, and I think that those extra thousands and thousands of trips are going to create more of a danger to me and the neighbors in that neighborhood than could possibly be saved by an extra 60 seconds of that not being an EVA. So that's that. This is going to significantly affect my quality of life, the noise, the extra noise that's going to be created by all these trips and things like that. People constantly run that stop sign. People constantly do burnouts at that intersection. People constantly do circles of burnouts in that intersection, and that's just going to get worse if that becomes a road, is accessed by another 500 houses. Also, is the, this is going to be a City of Folsom Road, correct? They're going to, it's going to be turned over to the City of Folsom, right?
Whatever part, it depends on the side of the county line.
That's what it says in here.
Right, right.
Yeah, and so is the City of Folsom going to monitor that stop sign and make sure people don't run it? I mean, that's a police, you know, that's part of their jurisdiction. I guarantee you, there's not going to be one single police officer there in the whole time that you have that, that I'm a resident there.
Well, I'll just beg to differ, because we have interconnectivity across county lines between the highway and Green Valley Road, and I guarantee you, our police officers are at those monitoring because there are issues, and we make sure we correct those, so...
Like I say, I think the safety issue is, it's going to be a bigger safety issue creating that road than the amount of time somebody might save in having an EVA. I think you're going to actually kill people. We've already had someone kill that Stonebrier. I think you're going to kill more people having that road as a road instead of an EVA, is all I have to say.
All right, thanks, Ed. Next speaker?
Your next speaker is Matt Seitz, and Matt will be followed by Tim Halverson.
Good evening, Matt. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I appreciate the moment to speak. I am Matt Seitz. I'm an associate with the American Institute of Architects. I'm also a lead AP planner, as well as an urban designer by profession. I'm here tonight, though, representing the Rolling Hill CSD as the president of the board, so please bear with me as I try to get through all my notes. The CSD is a public jurisdictions whose annual budget is approximately $160,000, of that which 90% is expended on roads, parks, and lighting. By comparison, the proposed fiscal year '17-'18 Folsom City budget is approximately $200 million. Of that, $30.5 million, which is 15% of your budget, is expended on traffic and parks. In comparison, our budget to service our constituents is approximately 0.08% of your budget. The Rolling Hill CSD serves approximately 1,000 citizens, 400 homes, compared to Folsom serving 77,246 per the latest budget report. Effectively, our CSD is 1% of your jurisdiction in which you serve. The board members and citizens of our jurisdictions are not here tonight to be bad neighbors or to instill conflict and delays for this project, but more so to make sure the impacts of our community are mitigated for. While easements have been granted nearly two decades ago for various reasons, our board has been working in good faith with the developer on an MOU that would mitigate for the impacts of an additional 530 homes through our jurisdiction and roads. We believe that the easements were granted with the expectation that any use impacts of the Prima Road easement would be mitigated and negotiated in a fair way as not to burden the existing community. The developer had graciously worked with us to be a good neighbor and responded to our concerns with bicycle paths being rerouted, internal street and development plans redesigned to minimize the amount of direct access between the Alder Creek and Prima Drive, so it did not become a major thoroughfare between subdivisions, abandoning a second EVA access route when the Phase Two begins, and then later a handshake agreement to contribute an equitable share for both roads and parks. Per the traffic study completed on 12/30/2016, the proposed project will introduce approximately 218 additional peak AM trips out of Folsom Heights and 104 peak AM trips into Folsom Heights, compared to the existing 149 additional peak AM trips out of Stonebrier and 42 peak AM trips into Stonebrier. That's 162% increase in traffic.
Okay, Matt, we're getting close to the three minutes here, so summarize for me.
Fair enough, I'll finish this, I'll finish this section here. The proposal to only fund Prima Drive operations and road maintenance is far shorter the amount of long-term wear and tear this project will impact Stonebrier Drive. I'm almost there, give me a moment. The Rolling Hill CSD funding, we simply can't manage that as a small community paying $200 a year per household, and we should not be forced to. While the decision, or the discussion, may come to maintaining an EVA-only access road, we recognize that this was another good-faith effort by the developer to mitigate impacts to our community on a more personal level. We understand that the action of the council to prevent barriers to EVA routes thus providing timely lifesaving service, services, the CSD also has the duty to provide safe streets within our jurisdiction. We are not looking for a short-term fix or economic advantage for the developer. We are looking toward a long-term relationship between our two jurisdictions.
Okay, you getting towards the end there, Matt?
Yeah, I'm a half a sentence out.
Okay, all right.
So, again, we are just looking for a long-term relationship between our two jurisdictions, which will be far after the developer sold the property and it's been built out, similar to how the Eldorado Hills and the Folsom Fire Department have a relationship. So, thank you for hearing.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Okay, your next speaker is Tim Halverson, and Tim will be followed by Michelle Meisner.
Good evening. My name's Tim Halverson. I represent the Rolling Hill CSD. I'm vice president of the, of the CSD. One of the things that, to dovetail on what Matt was discussing was, there are other impacts that we were discussing with the developer that we, you know, talked about, that we worked through, that we, like Matt said, we had a handshake agreement, because there are going to be impacts to our parks. Unlike the Folsom CSD, or the Folsom City and their parks, we have a very minor budget, and, you know, a little bit of impact makes a huge impact for us, because we have older equipment, that any, anything we decide to try and add on to to mitigate the impacts tends to be a huge impact to us cost-wise, you know? Minute we have to change out, even add a swing to add to the, you know, to mitigate the additional impact, it's a huge cost. We end up having to replace the whole piece, the whole equipment, et cetera. So, like Matt said, our budget's minor, you know? So we really want to engage back with the developer and possibly the city council. I'm told that you guys were taking the lead on this. We really didn't have a fair, we had, you know, plenty of talks with the developer, but as it, as it was voted upon with the city council, we really didn't have a fair opportunity to discuss with the city council all of the issues and potential impacts and health and safety of our community. So I'm hoping that you guys will take, take that into consideration as you hopefully reconsider the opportunity to hear it again at a future, at a future date.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Michelle Meisner, and Michelle is followed by Kari Rizley.
Hello, council, I'm Michelle Meisner. I reside at 5004 Winterfield Drive. I do want to say for the record, that when I heard of the ruling that was made by the council, I did not also receive a notice that you were going to be discussing that matter on your agenda, and so I did email the council, as well as the planning director, to which I did not receive any response from anybody with my questions or concerns. Like I said, I do live at Winterfield Drive. My property is adjacent to the new development area. Prior to living there, I've lived there for eight years. I was an 11-year resident of Folsom. I've actually voted in for the five of you, with the exception of Mr. Gaylord, since I believe this is your first term. I'm here to express my objection to the Prima Drive being made a four-way intersection to allow open access to that intersection. I have attended the Rolling Hill CSD special meeting on June 6, as well as the planning meeting on June 7, and the developer took our concerns to heart, as well as the Planning Commission, and it was agreed that that would be an emergency vehicle access only. And I do not have an objection to that at all. I totally agree with the need for emergency access with the quickest route to that area, but I am objecting to the open access. The things that I would like you to take into consideration regarding Prima, we have over 200 homes in Stonebrier with only one entrance and exit. That is the only entrance and exit we have. The only other option we have is to go through Springfield Meadows, which is a small, little community that has country-sized roads with no sidewalks, as well as we are their only optional exit entrance if something was to happen at their main entrance. So that's another 60-plus homes that could come through our entrance and exit. I, myself, drive in and out of the neighborhood four to five times with school drop-offs, pickups, sporting events, going out for work, shopping, so compound that by 200-plus other homes that do the same thing. That's an incredible amount of traffic at our small, little intersection. We have already had one fatal accident, as which was mentioned, at the intersection of White Rock and Stonebrier, and if you were to put another 500-plus homes that have the ability to come through that, that's only going to impact the congestion at that intersection more. If an incident does happen at the intersection there, and it is prior to getting to Prima Drive, our residents have no other option to get out of the neighborhood. And this was witnessed when we had a fire a few years ago, which was right up to...
You would if this road was there, okay?
No, I'm saying if it happens before we get to that intersection in our neighborhood. So if you're...
What do you mean, getting out onto White Rock?
It's, if you're coming down Stonebrier Drive from the neighborhood where all of the homes are, prior to getting to the Prima Drive, if something was to happen at that intersection, we would have no exit.
But how about something after?
Something after...
Something after Prima Drive, between Prima and White Rock, and you needed a way to get out of the neighborhood?
There's nothing...
There will be.
No. I'm not sure you're understanding. Springfield Meadows is that intersection, so if something happened at that intersection, we would have no access to Springfield Meadows.
Okay.
Because there's nothing else except for a fire, a fire gate. And when we had the fire five years ago, no one could open the fire gate, and people were driving across to our community park to get out of the neighborhood. So that is a concern of ours, since my property is one that burned during that fire.
Okay.
Um...
And we're getting way into the three minutes here, so you got a final thought there?
Well, my final thought is that I am in full support of making that an EVA, as I said before, but also take into consideration your Folsom residents, they're going to be in these new homes. Do they want our 200-plus residents driving through their small community, you know, through their community to cut into Folsom? So it's, just doesn't make sense to have that in...
It's already, it's already happening in other parts of Folsom that goes up to the counterline.
Exactly, and the residents aren't happy. I have lots of friends in Folsom, so just wanting you to take that into consideration.
All right, thank you.
All right, your next speaker is Kari Rizley, and Kari will be followed by Dennis Chu.
Good evening, Kari.
Hi, my name's Kari Rizley. I live at 621 Stonebrier Court. Michelle pretty much said everything that I would have said. I also used to live in Folsom. She knows a lot of people, and I know a lot of people. What went down between the Planning Commission time when we were all here, we were all convinced, like, okay, good, it's going to be emergency access only, only to find out... like, okay, good, it's going to be emergency access only, only to find out that it was a super shady thing that went down, especially not finding out about the council meeting, I landed from being out of the country to saying, there was a meeting, this all went down without anybody really knowing. I think that's really sad, and really shady. I know a lot of people in Folsom. I understand there's three chairs up for grabs, am I right?
Yes.
Yes. Next, along with Michelle, I lived there for a while. We know a lot of people, a lot of people. And for them to hear how messed up our neighbors for not even taking into account our concerns, actually, your planning commission did take into their concerns. In fact, they were all very much behind what we wanted to have done here. And I think it's really sad and shameful that this is going down like it's going down, and it's shady.
I just want you to understand that the action that the planning commission took was to recommend-
Yes.
To make a recommendation to the city council.
I understand, the recommendations.
And so therefore, because it's a recommendation, perhaps if you don't attend a lot of these meetings, maybe it didn't seem logical that the next, the next step would be that the council would actually hear it.
The problem is, is that, you know, in all due respect to that, that's exactly right, they are, they don't make policy, but, you know, the, there wasn't due diligence to allow residents to testify at the council meeting, and that's why, you know, the biggest issue I have is that the issue might be that, you know, it's better for emergency services to have a full road versus an EVA, but we didn't get time to even look at that, and nobody got time to testify.
No one.
So, it's, it's a huge gap.
No, all of the people that requested to speak at the last council meeting got-
No, because they didn't know.
That's the point.
The people, the people that, what I'm saying is, the people that were here were allowed to speak.
Yeah, but 80 people left the planning commission feeling like something was done? Even, even the developer, the applicant, you know, they all, they all made a, you know, it's not, it's, 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 this is a weird project in general, because it's quasi-Folsom, but it does affect everyone else. So, you know, I got, I got blasted for saying, hey, you know, why are you sticking up for Eldorado residents? When, it's not even that, it's the fact that there wasn't due diligence or the ability for folks to come who thought one thing versus another. And that's what I said at the last meeting, is that the transparency factor on that, on that vote, I don't think it was anything up here, so everyone, like, with your statements of saying three seats are up to grab, I don't think anyone up here, I know, it's, it's-
Really, you guys did not even, you were not aware that we had issues with this road, when you guys went to vote on it?
Oh, absolutely.
Nobody had issues?
Yes, probably about 15 or 20 people spoke.
One person, one person voted against, is, am I right? I guess, have you been out to see where this is happening, and what is happening? Have, have you been out there?
Yes.
So how do you feel about that, when you see what's actually going to be happening to our community, that what you're going to be bringing to us?
I, I have a feeling that perhaps we have a, we have a basic disagreement as to what will or will not happen if that's a full road versus an EVA.
It doesn't need to be a full road. You don't need that as a full road. You don't.
I know that's-
Bottom line, no, you don't, you don't.
Okay.
Okay, so the way this went down, the point is shady. I don't like it one bit. And believe me, people are going to hear about it. Who will be voting for these three seats? Thank you.
All right. Next speaker, please.
Your next speaker is Dennis Chu, and Dennis is followed by, it looks like Shane It's not Stephanie, but I can't read the writing, sorry.
So it's Dennis Chu, I'm a resident in the Stonebrier project. So, this is like my first experience, the process here. So the planning meeting was great, and, and we heard a lot about it, but the biggest concern, if you were out there, if you look at the angle and you see the new development there, so if you really looked at the whole project as a whole, that new role should have been through that new project, right? Not through that side road. So that's number one observation, if you really wanted to do the planning correctly. Then the second, second observation that I wanted to make in regards to safety is that you guys probably, I don't know if you heard about, there are multiple bus stops there in the morning and the afternoon? So if you, especially right by the Prima Drive, right there, right above, within a block, within a half-block in that park area, is all school, school stops. Who's going to consider that? Did you guys consider that in your voting? Did you just listen to the developer and just say, oh, sure, it looks fine? So when you go to these sites, you really have to go, not at a point in time, but throughout the day, and see how the children and the safety is affected. So that's kind of the point that I wanted to make, is that, yeah, the, the road would be great, but it's only one lane, it's not a multiple lane. So, you know, all that safety issue, if something happens, there's no way getting out. And you suggest that, well, you could go out through the back, right? No, but if it happens prior to that, there is no way. Especially that area across from the freeway, high, you might say, high level of hazard for fire, right? Because cars drive by, they throw a cigarette, extremely dangerous. So you have to consider all that into it, and say, how do we get children out during those crises? And safety issue with the bus stops, something to consider.
Okay. Thanks, Dennis. Next speaker.
Next is maybe Shane Haley, and then followed by Aaron Litchfield. Sorry about that.
Good evening.
Hi, not Shane Haley, Tim Haley, 631 Stonebrier Court, not to be confused with Stonebrier Drive. Do you understand the differences specifically?
Mm-hmm.
Everyone? Okay, excellent. Issue before us, the Prima Court extension, is more specifically a public safety issue, I believe. Would you agree? Think so? We can all agree one thing, public safety is extremely important. That's what we're here about, that's what the crux of this issue is, public safety for people of Folsom, and public safety for people of Eldorado Hills. The problem being, we're not considering everyone's public safety in this situation. I believe that we're putting a primary emphasis on the safety of those people in, or to be in, the new development in Folsom, who are not there yet. They've not paid taxes. My neighbors and I, however, have paid hundreds of thousands of dollars of property taxes in that area. We have provided the financial basis for the Eldorado Hills Fire Department. We've paid for the trucks. We have provided the public safety. And it seems the safety of the people who are residents is not being taken into primary importance here. I have a problem with that. I personally feel that taxpayers should be heard, we should be respected. You should be considering us primarily because we live there. You're considering the public safety of people who are not even residents yet, over those tax-paying citizens. I feel that primarily is specifically un-American. We pay taxes, hundreds of thousands of dollars, my neighbors and I, and basically what we're getting is a situation where our safety is being compromised, specifically my safety. You've proposed a two-lane road down a very steep grade into what will run into another steep grade. I find that a traffic hazard. It isn't the number of trips down the hill, it is the severity of the grade of two separate intersections coming into a four-way stop that creates a, a, a very dangerous situation. So in terms of mitigation, what have you offered us? I back up to what will be property parallel to the proposed road. So far, what you have offered is shrubs, bushes, with a steep slope coming down, if there's an accident, they're going to go right through my fence into my home. Now let's think of public safety. Why is it that only the public safety of Folsom is being considered here? You need to consider the public safety of the people of Eldorado Hills who are being neglected in your decision. And I think it's important to understand how severe the potential accidents are, given the grades into that area. So please, give that some consideration. The one thing I could say, if you have to do this road, which I don't think you have to do, as Kari Rizley pointed out, I think you're doing it, there may be a hidden agenda here, I don't know, I don't think necessarily any of you have it, but in terms of economics, possibly. But we really need to reconsider this situation. I really think that you're proposing a public safety hazard for the people of Eldorado Hills. Basically, we're not being respected as taxpayers, and I find that specifically very un-American. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thanks, Tim.
Tim is followed by Aaron Litchfield, and Aaron will be followed by Tamara Litchfield.
Hi, I'm Aaron Litchfield. I moved from Folsom in 2005. I'm now a resident of Eldorado Hills. I live on 9001 Summerfield Way, which is deep into the Stonebrier development. I understand that you have concerns about the safety of Folsom residents, and I respect that. I think that there are compromises that could be reached that would not impact the safety of Folsom residents at all. For example, if you left that road, if you installed the road and just made it EVA, EVA access, without putting a gate or anything like that, just a sign that said, no through traffic, then your residents would have 100% of the safety that you had envisioned in putting a road through there. And then, we would be entirely happy because we wouldn't be having through-traffic coming in and impacting the safety of the several hundred homes that have a single in and out, and no, and there's no way for us to develop any other roads out of our development into Eldorado Hills. So, I would implore the council to consider the options that would work for both of us, and I think that would be a fair solution that would help all parties. If, if safety is truly your primary concern, I don't see any reason why that wouldn't work for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
Next speaker is Tamara Litchfield, and Tamara is followed by Stephanie Haley.
Hi, I'm Tamara Litchfield. I'm wife of Aaron Litchfield, who just spoke, 9001 Summerfield Way. I was around when they had the fire that was spoken of earlier, and I was away from my home. I could not get to my home. Fortunately, it was before I had a little baby, so my, my older children were old enough not to need my home right away, but we, we couldn't get there for hours. And that was, I felt like that was unacceptable. And to add another road there where there's chance of more and more accidents, I, I feel is unacceptable. I also like to, I agree with everything that all the other residents have said, and as you heard my husband say, we did live in Folsom before, and we do know, I would say hundreds of residents in Folsom. So, I would be, I am glad that you are doing your service, and I would hope that you will listen to us again. Thanks.
Thanks, Tamara.
Next is Stephanie Haley, and Stephanie is followed by Kara Houlis.
Evening, Stephanie.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Haley, and I just want to reiterate my address, which is wrong in your, your report, your staff report, it's 631 Stonebrier Court. And it does say road in the staff report, and if any of you've been out to the site, which many of my neighbors have pointed out, is there's a significant difference of where I live. My husband, Tim, that just spoke, being the American that he is, it is a big concern for our location of where this now continuous road is being approved, and possibly can be approved tonight. So I appreciate Mayor being able to have my community speak again and our concerns, since we had basically, or I know, I had basically very little time to prepare for any of these meetings with your planning commission and, and the council meetings these last two. I didn't find out that this was going to be a continuous street. I'm going to use the word continuous, because I've been there for 17 years and practicing real estate in Tri-County for 20 years. And I have your planning commission, your general, excuse me, your, your general plan book for six years. So, of course, it's my concern on May 27th, when someone's measuring in my backyard for supposedly this road. So, as of June 4th, I got a planning commission public notice in the mail about the planning commission, which started my, you know, my research and losing lots of work time researching this continuous road. It's all, I've prepared for this, all this new, new development, we've been there for 17 years waiting for it. It's a continuous road that obviously got me riled up. So, on your staff report, I just want for the, for the record, on page 2 and 22, you guys, well, there's a description about public outreach. There was none, whether for the applicant or from the CSD, Rolling Hill CSD. There's no note on my door, no, no handshake deal, no conversation from anyone on my jurisdiction, and no public outreach. They have their meetings, I don't go to their meetings, I don't go to their pancake breakfasts, I do not do them, I'm busy selling real estate. So how I found out was pitiful. So, and also, just to, for, for last question, I would like to hopefully be heard again, hopefully we can get this heard by council again before it is approved, because of all the issues and what you're hearing from our neighbors. Lastly, sitting in the planning, planning commission, all the way up to Monday for four hours, the road on Prima Court, which we're talking about to be continuous, the APN number is 117-010-04. That is zone per every map, and the newest map I have in my hands, I got yesterday, every one of them is zoned it open space or recreation. So I would like to have, obviously you can't respond tonight, where I can find that this road falls into recreational or open space, because that's what I've been looking at and reading for the last seven years. And lastly, I got to do one more last thing, the road, that's continuous road being, whether it be emergency vehicle access or continuous, no matter what, it's never been voiced, or we've never been notified that that was going to be continuous. It's always been the three access roads at the top suddenly portion of your, this big community that's being built. So, again, doesn't need to be there. EVA, great, we'll be happy with it. I believe in safety too, for everybody, not just me, which I could have turned it into a all-about-me when the applicant came to my house on May 31st. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Next speaker is Kara Houlis, and Kara is followed by Ellen Post.
Evening, Kara. Hi, I'm Kara Houlis, and I live at 3178 Montrose Way, also deep within Stonebrier. Thank you for hearing us. I just kind of want to reiterate what a lot of my neighbors have said, that I attended the June 7th planning meeting, and I hope you can reconsider the planning commission's recommendations. I was under the impression that those recommendations would be voted on, so I, I actually didn't know when, and I just want to ask for you to reconsider changing Prima Drive to an EVA road.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Kara.
Next is Ellen Post, and Ellen will be followed by Stephen Post.
Good evening again, I'm Ellen Post. People have covered a lot of the stuff. So, I want to reiterate though, that when, the Friday before the meeting, I got this map from Steve Banks saying that that was the road plan, it's 20 feet, we were all happy. We come in, we get this other thing that's all crossed off. I don't know if you were all aware of it, that was on the table at the last minute, crossed off, and so we had no way of preparing anything for, and this isn't been, hasn't been enough time for us either to get all our information together, but, so there's been a series of-
Are you talking about the, this item that was on the back table tonight?
Not tonight, it was last time. I have it here. So this is what I got from Steve Banks, all the plans, 20-foot road, it looked good. There's also another, the consent calendar, of course, all of this doesn't make sense to us, I've spent so many hours trying to figure it out, and it talks about the EVA road with gates, and that's in the staff report just recently, and I have that too. So we're thinking, well, maybe they are going to put the gates on it, and they, you know, thought it over, and it isn't such a bad idea. So, all this misinformation is, has confused us all, and we just want to know, you know, what our options are here, and to have you all know what exactly is going on. So how many people have come to our homes, or I've invited you all, I know, through email? Has anybody gone and looked at the road, or looked behind our homes to see what we're talking about?
Yeah.
In person?
Yeah, I think a number of us were.
Okay, good. All right. Well, so, I think, what is the option for, is it another public hearing, or what are we looking at realistically, to have maybe a condition put on it, or not have gates possibly, and just have fire apparatus access roadway signs? I printed a couple, because they look good to me, emergency access, the fire people- if we could have that and have a discouraging kind of a road where people don't go down it, that would be an option, because last meeting, it, it seemed like- it, that would be an option, because last meeting, it seemed like the issue was the gates and the fire trucks getting through the gates. Our fire chief said, and correct me if I'm wrong, that he would have been okay with if you had decided to put the gates, but he would have lived with it, but he doesn't want them because it might delay it, and he's not for any delays. And then Clay told a reporter last week that he was perfectly okay with having the road be an EVA road. So everybody seems okay with it, and then all of a sudden, you know, it's now back to a full road. So I'm wondering if there's some other reason it needs to be that full road, like marketing, because I went online and I saw that they're advertising for developers that there's a cut through, through to Eldorado Hills for convenience. So I have that in a packet, but I have like 800 pages of things. But, so is there another reason they really want the full access road, you know, or is it really about safety? We don't think anymore it's about safety. So maybe signs, again, let me see if that's all I have. Oh, and that at a later date, when there's a fire station put in, then you could put gates up for us. I know it'd be a few years, but I'd be willing to have, you know, a few people cut through and go past those signs rather than a full access road. Again, I know I keep saying this through my backyard, but then I wouldn't have to get a brand-new fence, which I just got an estimate, and it's $15,000 because we have a large area. And I would feel safer because there wouldn't be all these cars going back and forth, and I wouldn't have bushes in my backyard, which I believe is a fire hazard. And that's wild land there, you may have noticed. And so we also have a little green belt there with birds, and I know people don't care about that.
Okay, Ellen, we're way past three minutes, so thanks. Thanks for your passion. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Stephen Post, and Stephen is followed by Tim Tarran.
Good evening, Stephen.
Hello. I am not a public speaker, so please bear with me, but I do feel the need to talk. Ellen is my wife. We live at 632 Stonebrier Court. We bought the house shortly after we got married, and we intend to pay it off and live there when we retire. And now I think the case can be made that this impacts our property value as much as anybody's, at least. And we're level with the, the road. And, and I wanted to, the point that council member Gaylord made last time, which was that having an open road is not necessarily going to be better than having a dedicated road, which is, its whole reason is for emergency access, that that would be slower than, than having an open road. There could be traffic coming down the road, that people have to pull over, the traffic, the fire trucks would have to go through, especially if people are evacuating and stuff. I don't see how that would necessarily be better than having a dedicated road with, you know, with a, with a gate. So anyways, the, then there's the traffic considerations and everything else. So, but it just seems to me that our side of the argument is not really represented in this, and it's, it's all comes down to 30 to 45 seconds. So our, you know, the value of our house, and we might never get back what we put into it if we, if we do decide to move because of all the traffic and everything, 30 to 45 seconds. I mean, it seems to me reasonable to just say, let's put the gates and have, be a good neighbor, like I know you say you want to do. And so that's all I have to say.
All right, thanks. You did fine, Stephen. Next speaker.
Your next speaker is Tim Tarran.
Good evening, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Tim Tarran for Folsom Heights. So a couple of things. First of all, I, just speaking of fairness here, this was supposed to be just the second reading of the Development Agreement Amendment, not a full-blown hearing on the merits of the project one way or the other. You've heard a half-hour, 14 speakers, that's okay. But I would like and request that you take action on the second reading of the amendment, just so it's done, because it's a technical requirement and doesn't really add or subtract anything from what you're, you heard tonight. Second of all, I'm going to reiterate, because I want to respond to the CSD folks, there was a time when we were negotiating with them in very good faith, and frankly, in terms of notice to the folks out there, we were on their agenda, I think, for a year or more. But we were negotiating about an agreement to provide funding for maintenance. Specifically, at the last hearing, I said, "We are no longer supportive of that agreement." That's not to say that something won't be done anymore in the future in the way of funding, but to condition the project on an agreement is something we adamantly oppose because it gives them veto power over our project. We cannot simply have that, especially since, given the amount of resistance in that neighborhood, even if their board voted for it, there could be a referendum out of that many houses, they could get it on a ballot quickly, and then they could overturn it. So we can't have that. Third, so we had a meeting out in their community, and when we went to the planning commission, we did agree, and we still would be willing, as we said, to do an EVA only. But I want to remind you, when we went to the planning commission and we said EVA only, even then, we had people stand up and say even no EVA, and adamantly, or, yeah, so, so-
Let him, let him finish, please. Let him finish.
Yes, please.
Listen, listen, let him finish, please. Thank you.
So we, thank you, because we've come a long way from there, obviously. My point here is, we had a planning commission hearing, we had a hearing now tonight again. If you have a motion for reconsideration, you'll have a hearing on that, which everyone can speak at. And then you have to have a hearing, if you pass that, you have to have another hearing on the project again. So that will make like five hearings. So my request is, make up your mind what you want to do, okay? And, and then do it, and do it quickly and decisively so that we can move on, because we all need to. We all need to know what we, how to plan for the future here. So, three things. Move on the, the second reading tonight. Remember our, our position regarding agreements with the CSD as a condition of the project or a development agreement requirement. And thirdly, act decisively. Okay?
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
No more of us to speak.
Okay, so that, that's it. Okay, so first of all, thanks for, everybody for coming out here this evening. So, so just, what I just want to do is make sure that we really understand, you know, where we're at here as far as, you know, kind of some of this technicality stuff. And, and some of this stuff's already been addressed. But this item before us this evening does not preclude me as mayor from making a decision to reconsider the vote we made last meeting related to the characteristics of this road, or am I wrong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm testing.
You're being very diplomatic. So typically, in a, in a typical meeting setting, this is turning out to be not one of those, as you can tell already. In a typical meeting setting, you can easily have a, once you make a decision as a body to approve or disapprove something, you can easily have another motion following that decision to reconsider. Hence, no need to worry about blind re-agendize the whole matter, it was already agendized. So you could easily have done that. The problem is, the action you took on July 11th was a done deal. It was an action by the entire body of the city council. Anyone who disagrees with the council action, any action regarding any item, has relief. They can seek judicial intervention to challenge the city council's action. We cannot advise them because our client is the city council's body, but they have the right to seek independent legal advice. We've told them that as well, whoever contacted us. Now, Tim is correct about what is being agendized before you tonight, and that is only the second reading and possible adoption of the uncaught by owners pertaining to the D.A. Amendment. What I would urge you to consider, however, is this. If you have any inclination to reconsider, or agendize in a future meeting to reconsider council action approving Resolution 9965 on July 11th pertaining to the Folsom Heights project, I would recommend that you continue the second reading of calendar, because part of the entitlement in the development agreement is Resolution 9965, the council approval of the subdivision map. And once that's locked in, it's frozen in the development agreement unless the developer agrees to change it. You can also amend a previously approved subdivision map under the subdivision map act. But again, you, you would, I would recommend that you not take action to, to approve the second reading of that, because you would require developer consent. So if you do move forward, taking the second, taking action on the second reading, then candidate from all aspects of, of the procedure point of view, the challenge would be with the courts.
Okay. All right. So, so let me just share some thoughts here. Well, first, let's start off with the developer, okay? And people, you know, not just insinuating, but directly declaring that there's a hidden agenda here. For myself, and, and I know my council members well, is there certainly was none of that. And, and as Tim stated, you know, the, the last speaker here, they really just want to get this wrapped up. They don't want meeting number five, six, and seven, and all this sort of stuff. Tim has stated that at the planning commission meeting that you folks were at, the EVA was fine. It came to us, and for myself, we're getting some information related to, you know, compromising the safety of residents who aren't directly, they're, they're future residents. What, what really impressed upon me during that meeting when I voted to make sure that this was a regular neighborhood road, you know, accessing new neighborhoods with the understanding of the impacts that many of you described, is, is this area is, and, you know, there was this, the discussion related to paying taxes, which I certainly understand. These residents are going to pay taxes to the Eldorado Hills Fire District. This is Eldorado Hills Fire District jurisdiction, kind of a strange overlap in, you know, across the county line. So, so I just want to make sure that's clear. It's neither here nor there, but, but I just want to make sure that's clear as well, because, because that's, you know, a part of my consideration of the vote, the last council meeting, was exactly that, is, is that it, you know, felt like this is important for the safety of future residents of Folsom that are being served initially and only by the Eldorado Hills Fire District. So, you know, that, that makes a huge impression on me. And, and, you know, with all due respect, people that talk about, you know, what's 45 seconds mean, it can mean a lot. As many have articulated, there, there are other issues. I mean, this is very arguable. I'm, you know, I'm not going to say that it's not. I have a feeling that, you know, we'll, we'll call for the, a vote on this, but I believe if this ends up failing, or if it ends up a 2-2 tie, that, so, so let's say we don't continue this, okay? We, so, so we don't make a motion to continue it, we just throw it out there for a vote, and it ends up being defeated or a tie vote, is, does, what does that mean?
That would mean that the amendment to the development agreement would not be, be, be acted on. There's, there will be no decision to amend the development agreement. There was still the tier-one development agreement in place. This is to amend that development agreement.
Right.
So that would still remain in place, but that would not revive council action taken on July 11th approving Resolution 9965.
It would not revive it, but without this passing, then the, the path to the mayor teeing this up at a future council meeting for reconsideration is more open at that point then, right? Because we did not pass this?
Not necessarily more open.
Okay.
But it's, it's the same process, whether it is passed or not.
Okay, okay. So, so to, to, what you're telling me is, is that for the, the path of, the path that would make this work, maybe not only the best, but the only path, is that we would vote to continue this, and then I, as mayor, would have an opportunity to work with the city manager on, on reconsidering the vote at the last council meeting?
You can certainly do that, but keep in mind, Mr. Mayor, that anyone who disagrees with council action can seek judicial intervention. They can, they can go to court.
Right.
That's the court of law, excuse me. We don't want to send people to court, since we can't solve it here. That doesn't make sense to me.
Here's, here's why I'm stammering, for lack of a better term. I, I don't necessarily think, I, I don't know if I would change my mind based on full and, full testimony from everybody who, who wanted to address this based on notification that everyone got. But, you know, I do suffer a little bit from the fact that it, it appears there was a breakdown. So I guess that's another question for mine. Between the planning commission and the city council meeting, is, is there notification that this is going up before a council meeting, or do we feel the notification process ends leading up to the planning commission meeting? And to add on to that, does the notification requirement, the legal requirement, end at the county line?
I think that's a question that planning has to address, because I was not involved in the notification process myself. But allow me to address the, the initial question that the mayor posed. The planning commission action was properly agendized as a recommendation, and the staff recommendation and the chair entertaining motion was a recommendation to the city council. So I totally understand, for most of the citizens, they, they do not understand, may not understand the nuance between final action versus recommendation.
Correct.
But the council action on the 11th had to be agendized, no doubt about that.
I, yeah, I understand the agendizing, but noticing is a, is a whole different thing. So- And I think there's one other important differentiation here. The, the staff report prior to the planning commission was whatever the staff report was. The planning commission took an action at the planning commission meeting to make, to make a recommendation to the city council. That recommendation from the planning commission was included in the staff report. The recommendation from the, that came forward from the planning commissioners themselves did not jive with the recommendation from planning staff that was included in the city council packet. So that's part of the issue here. The planning commissioners wanted one thing to happen, the planning department staff included all of that discussion and, you know, the conversation that took place at the planning commission in their council packet, in the council packet agenda, and they did not jive with one another.
And add on to that, it didn't, it didn't hit us until 10 minutes before the meeting, so we didn't see any of that crossing out.
No, that's not true, Roger.
Absolutely true.
So, 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 and that's, I think, you know, those are, those can be important points, but getting back to the thing that I think is most important is, so, so, so there was an absence of, and I'm not talking about agendizing, but notifications. So, so this, so this goes to the planning commission, the planning commission made their decision, and then, you know, the next city council meeting comes to us. So, so the understanding is, is that there's an awareness that this is coming to the city council, and, you know, a comfort level amongst a lot of the residents that, you know, there probably wouldn't be any change, but it appears that some may not have even known this was coming to us. So, so is there, Steve, is there, do, do we notice between, or Dave, do we notice between, you know, from a planning mission to a city council meeting that, you know, okay, this is going to be at the planning commission meeting, here's the notice, noticing requirements, but then does it just kind of disappear after that, or?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, Steve Banks was the staff planner on this project and shepherded it through the planning commission summit. Perhaps we can have Mr. Banks come to the podium and talk about the specific notification requirements and how they were implemented with regard to this project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thanks, Steve. Been, been interesting watching this, hasn't it?
Absolutely. Following the planning commission meeting, another public notice was mailed to residents both in Eldorado Hills and with Folsom. Anybody who lived with- Anybody who lived within 300 feet of the proposed project boundary was mailed, mailed a new notice following the planning commission meeting.
And it was done by U.S. mail, right?
It was done by U.S. mail, correct.
Okay.
And that was, that was sent out alerting them to the July 11th city council meeting. It also indicated the decision that was made at the planning commission meeting.
Steve, can I ask you a question? The, so the, the letter that we received prior to the, with all the redlining and crossing out everything, that was not part of that, though?
That's not part of the mailing, public notice process, no.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Steve. That, that helps.
Andy, can I?
Yeah, jump in, Ernie.
Is she okay?
Yeah, yep.
On the Thursday, Thursday before the city council meeting, we got a horrendous package about that size, the biggest one I've seen in years. And in that was this project. And somewhere in there was a minutes of the planning commission, okay? I didn't get that far in. I got almost all that, 500 pages of stuff read, but I didn't read that one. I met, I was meeting with the developer on Monday at 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock, to go over the concerns. At that time, I was informed there was, there was a question on the road. And my question to Tim was, what? I thought that was all solved at the planning commission, they all agreed. He said, no, it came up with some concern at the council. I was not aware. This is Monday, 10 o'clock before the council meeting. When I came here Tuesday, the re-striked-out thing, the recommendation for the, from the planning department was on our podium right here. That's when we got a chance to look at it. So, my concern is always, you know, I want the residents to have the full, this time to talk. I'm not saying I'm going to agree with you. And, and, and in my case, I'll tell you exactly, I got three years and so many months, and I'm done. So you're not threatening me. I'm very good. And, and I want to say one more thing, too, about parks. Don't worry about parks. We have beautiful parks in the city of Folsom. My dad, they're going to go up to Eldorado when they can go across 50. So I don't think that's a problem, until we get to 122 acres of parks done in South area, okay? So you can rest, I'm not saying they won't, but the chances are not too high. So I think my concern was just to hear you, okay? I have a, I have a, we have a good planning commission, and my planning commissioner is Jennifer Lane, and she did do everything you asked. Did I do? No, I didn't go up to see your project, okay? But she did, and she briefed me thoroughly, completely. She made a couple trips up to your houses and saw it, and she described the park and everything. So I wasn't exactly uninformed, but what, I was ready to vote for the, they've been intact, until I heard the, only three speakers versus the consideration of the fire chiefs about the amount of time they like. The telegraph came out recently, says only going to be emergency. Now, it, it's an open road. If that road goes in, it's an open road. It's not only emergencies. Now, the developer agreed that he put out that they would keep all construction trucks off of that road, if it was, they were restricted contractors, and that, that's a good sign. You don't want the big trucks going that way. The reason I'd like to, to see, I don't think we have a right to have the developer wait again. If we can approve the amendment, and then still come back and ask for another look at the, what we approved before, and since I was one of the ones that voted for it, I have the option to ask the mayor to do it. They may still vote three to two times, that could happen. But I just want to be sure you have both time to talk, okay? Because that's, that's, you know, I, I just don't want nobody to feel they got cheated, okay? And I'm glad the mayor allowed you to speak tonight, okay? He could have said no.
No, I always let Ernie speak. Come on, Ernie.
No, I mean, I mean, you let all the, all the residents speak.
So.
So that's where I'm at. I, I, I would like to approve the amendment, and let the developers get on. We're down to talking about a road, and, and there's a lot more that development than just the road. The road impacts, I know that, we, we understand that. But to the developers, and that, they've got a big project of 500 homes.
So, so, you know, and I, I think, you know, at least for myself and Ernie, you know, I'll let Carrie and Roger speak to this, but, but it's, you know, there's an interest in, in making sure due process was well-served, and, but there's also an interest in, you know, the immense amount of respect we have for timelines that, that any business owner, you know, or developer is, is trying to meet. They've got customers and deadlines and that sort of stuff. So, so it is, you've heard us, you've heard us speak, Steve, is, is there a way we can kind of accomplish, you know, really, what we'd like to do is, is get everything out of the way, but have an opportunity to have us and, you know, the folks that spoke here today, and probably even additional ones, is, is there a way to, and he's?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, perhaps I can introduce a, a policy direction for you, and then the city attorney can keep me honest with regard to the legal framework. But to the extent that the debate here has matured from no road, which I do believe was part of the dialogue at the planning commission, to whether or not this is a through road in the normal neighborhood road sense, or an EVA, or some other type of restricted access roadway, and the council does have relatively broad discretion relative to making findings and changing the character of roadways. We do that with some regularity here. And so, sensing the direction that Councilmember Sheldon is suggesting, to the extent that the entitlements and the presence of a road, without debating what the characteristics of that road might be, a path forward might be, approve this entitlement, look at what the conditions actually are after the development is built, which, the timeframe of which we're, we're uncertain, we don't, the city doesn't control that, but the development community, based on market conditions, do. And then you would have some discretion to change the characteristics of that roadway. There has been some talk relative to, you know, when the fire stations come, what it actually looks like, and, and maybe then that, that provides an opportunity, as we have done in other areas of Folsom, and particularly those areas where we have the city and Eldorado Hills sharing a street at the county line, which is, this is not relatively unique in, in that sense. So, that appears to me to be one path forward from a policy perspective, and the, the legal framework of which just depends on the, the details.
And I would probably also be prepared to move forward with approving the second reading, and leaving the possibility out there for reconsideration, given that I've already stated to the city attorney that I disagree with you. I think the process for that is something different, and, and I say that because I've been here for 19 years, and it's happened in the past, and I know what the process was when it happened before, that's why I'd appreciate it if you looked that up. And, but, and I'm, and I'm not saying whether I would change my mind about the previous, the previous action or not, but I think that's the only sticking point, and I think that if, at some future point in time, either in the next 60 days, or in the next 18 months, I don't have a problem with the, with the city council revisiting, you know, either from a reconsideration, or the suggestion that the city manager has made about whether or not we change the character of that road.
So, so, so along the lines of what our city manager suggested, so it would be within, you know, our charge to, to be able to consider the characters of that road two months from now?
That is absolutely correct. And I just received another confirmation from the developer's representative, that they don't have any preference one way or the other, so they'll find either way.
All right. So I think we've found our path here. So go ahead, Roger.
As part of that, can we, oh, so I mean, it's just going to hit the agenda again?
Right. So we can't, you know, we, we can't begin to, you know, because of Brown Act stuff, so it'd just be a matter of agendizing something in the future, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure that we have a comprehensive overview of everything involved with it, so traffic and all that stuff.
Oh, sure.
It's provided to us within time before.
I guarantee it's, it's all there, we'll just make sure that it, everybody sees it, so. All right. So, I'm not interested in talking about this anymore, except with this one thing, is, is that I will assure you that in some way, shape, or form, let's see, I'm mayor for about four more months, so I'm going to make sure that I don't have to deal with, no, I'll make sure that, that, that we get this reconsidered, and, and, and again, it sounds like, it sounds like the noticing was okay, but the expectations weren't, right? A little bit of that, or maybe the noticing wasn't quite there, there, but, but anyway, we don't need to argue about that, because we're going to make sure that this one issue, and, and again, I, I want to make, come to the defense of, of the developer there, because they, they have always just told us that, you know, whatever you work out, we're fine with. So, so I want to make sure they don't come off as, as being the bad people. You know, we, you know, we took a lot of stuff under consideration at our last council meeting, made the decision we did, but, again, I, I, I don't like the fact that people felt like due process was not fulfilled. So, so with that, I will move item 6A, and again, with that commitment, that city manager and I will work at agendizing this, this one issue for a future, future council meeting. And, and again, you know, Tim, maybe you could come up here and give me a, a timeline, this, you know, let's say this is going to be a full road. When would that road start going in?
Yeah, not till next year at the earliest.
Very good. Okay. All right. So did everybody hear that?
And I will second your motion, except I wanted to say that we are agreeing that there will be an additional discussion at the council level, not using the word reconsideration, because I believe it's got, it's got a legal meaning.
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm just not going to say reconsideration, I'm just going to say we're going to execute our, our rights as a council body to do what the city manager said. We don't have to, you know, we're just gonna, you know, we have the authority to do whatever it's suggested, so.
The policy decision from the council would be through a resolution, not to reconsider 9965, because 9965 embodies a whole bunch of entitlements, including the secret document, the map.
Right.
Design guidelines, and so on and so forth.
Right. We don't want to do that, and, and again, I think we've all explained why. So, so, so with that, so we have a, a motion by myself, a second by Vice Mayor Howell, and any other comments, Roger or Ernie?
Yeah, I actually just want to make one comment. So my opposition to this was not, it was, it wasn't that I don't, that I don't think 30 to 40 seconds is important for emergency response. My, my opposition was exactly what you folks are, are expressing. So it was more of an information-seeking and fact-finding than anything else, and, and ensuring you guys have, or constituents have, you know, due diligence to, to state and testify. So this is exactly what I wanted to see happen, so I'm really happy, you know, and I, I thank you for everything.
Okay. So, you're comfortable? All right. Good. Okay. So with that, please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Morn?
Yes. So you will be hearing from us, and I think you helped us set a record on a consent item for duration, so.
I'm going to make one other suggestion to both the, the Eldorado Hills residents, as well as Steve. Do you have email addresses for all these folks? Because I'm guessing that the vast majority are not, are not within the legal 300-foot requirement for notification, and that's kind of, that's how, it's, that's a legal requirement. So we're not required to notify everybody that lives in Eldorado Hills between the county line and La Trobe Road and Highway 50. So my suggestion to all of you folks is, if you want to get, if you want to receive the, any notification from the city of Folsom about the next time this may come on to the agenda, you need to get Steve your email addresses.
What do you mean by "may"? Is it going to come on the agenda or not?
It hasn't, that hasn't been determined. You know, it'll, there will be a discussion about it at some point, is, you know, as I said earlier, I don't know.
No, I, I can, I assure you that this will be on a future agenda while I'm mayor, which is the next four months. Absolutely. It will be agendized, you will be noticed, and, and, and it will be, you know, a one-issue item, which is just going to be that road. And again, this, and, you know, so, so I think everybody's comfortable, right, well, kind of comfortable, but, but again, with, with an opportunity where, so, question?
Yes, so there are residents along the.
And I'm going to repeat the question, just so it's on voice, so go ahead, I can hear you.
So the residents along the line at Chase and Development, many of them did not get a public notice, and they are within the range, they are not here today, some of them, so, and you're not going to have their email, so I think if, you know, you get the addresses of all the people.
So let me do this.
Maybe, maybe another suggestion would be the CSD provide the notification.
I was just going to ask if, so, so can, who, who wants to be the notification ringleader? Okay. All right. Stephanie. So Stephanie, you work with Steve, so, so we'll go through our boilerplate noticing process, but Stephanie can embellish that, okay? Does that work? Okay. All right. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for taking time to show up today, and we'll, we'll be keeping you posted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So, you guys can stay, you don't have to. Okay. Next item, please.
Your next item tonight is public hearing, item 7A. This is resolution number 9972, approving and confirming the report of delinquent utilities charges, and requesting Sack County to collect such charges on the tax roll.
Good evening, Jim. Sorry to keep you waiting.
That's okay. And I expected everybody to leave, by the way, when I got out.
That's right. We do this a lot, don't we?
Jim Francis, Director of Finance. This is a public hearing on the report of delinquent utility charges for fiscal years 16, 17. The city collects over 23,000 accounts, and approximately $46 million of various utility services, including water, sewer, and solid waste. Of those over 23,000 accounts, roughly 245 or 1% are more than 60 days delinquent as of June 30th, 2017. The active delinquencies amount to $73,000, which represents a delinquency rate of 0.16%, and that's substantially the same as last year's rate. All of these accounts are more than 60 days delinquent in payment. Each owner has been given at least two notices of delinquent payment and potential discontinuance of service. In addition, each owner has been given prior notice of this hearing and the intent to lien their property by June 5th, by a June, excuse me, a June 5th and a June 19th mailing. And there was public notice of this hearing given by, in the Folsom Telegraph on July 6th and July 13th. Owners may still contact us before August 11th if they wish to avoid having their property lien, as the county will not put this on the property tax until mid-October. By this action, I'm recommending that you pass resolution 9972, requesting that the county transfer these amounts to property tax roll for collection with the general property taxes.
Okay.
If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thanks, Jim. And this is kind of an annual exercise, and I know many other jurisdictions also do the same thing. I know Regional Sanitation District were doing this tomorrow, so before I open the public hearing, any questions for Jim on this item? Okay. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any requests to speak on this item?
You have no request to speak.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and close, oh, we do have a request to speak?
Yes, please.
Let's see, you'll need to come up and, to the microphone here, and if you could just state your name for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Mark Brady, and I did receive a letter informing me about the intent to lien, and I would like to request a postponement of that, due to the fact that I did some research, and I'd like to speak to the financial department about my findings with the state law library that indicates the city may be violating state law with some of their practices of billing and deposit collecting, and... billing and deposit collecting. And.
Okay. Um, so, so Jim, you mentioned the, you know, how, what's the timeline people have to address this before this actually goes to the county tax rolls?
Uh, the county won't put it on the tax rolls until October.
Okay.
Uh, we've got, uh, through about mid-September to, um, inform them and take the names off of the roll.
Okay, okay. So there's.
My, my other concern is that I had this happen once before, and the city charges me $1,000 to file that application with the county to have the county take my case onto their rolls.
Right.
And I really don't want to have that happen again with the fee that the city charges for filing those papers.
Right, right. So, so the reason I asked Jim that question is, is you have a few months to get that addressed, okay? So, so that's.
I understand that it's a few months before they actually bill me, but is the city going to nick me $1,000 for filing those papers again?
I'm, I'm not familiar with your case, and you'd have to work through our finance department on that, so, but.
That's why I'm asking for a slight delay before they file papers for me to be able to talk to the finance department.
Right, there won't be a filing for a couple of months. So you have a couple of months. So, so it's not immediate. The action we're taking today just sets in motion things that'll take place in a couple of months. So you have a couple of months.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so.
I'll move the resolution.
Actually, I just had a quick question. Yeah. And, and any other requests to speak on this item? Okay, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, Councilmember Gaylord?
So when the notices go out, and the two notices, I haven't seen one, did they have actual, like, um, avenues for folks to search for help, to try and?
Yes, there's a, there's a number on it for them to call, which is in our office, to arrange for smaller payments, extended payments, and to correct it if they can't bring it up to date, right, fully.
Actually, Jim, I think that same notice appears, whether it's delinquent or not, I think that information is on every utility bill that goes out.
It, it is on every utility bill, but when we give the special notice of, of this action, we emphasize it on that notice also.
So I'll still move resolution 9972.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that. Um, so, um, please call the roll on item 7A.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes. Okay, next item here is Prospect Ridge Landscape and Lighting District, and I believe Robert, lead us off here.
Madam Clerk, are you reading the item?
We're good.
Touche, Robert, yes.
Jump right in.
Maybe I'm reading the item. Uh, the item before you pertains to the applicant Tyker Land Company proposing to create a landscape and lighting district for the Prospect Ridge project on Levy Road. It's a 9.6-acre, uh, project. It includes one acre of landscape area, a half acre of open space, 97 new trees, an entry monument sign, six streetlights, and various fences and walls within the project site. On your, or at your July 11th city council meeting, you approved resolution number 9962, approving the engineer's report and declaring the intention to order the formation of the district. This district has only one resident at this time, that's the Tyker Land Company, so it's a ballot assessment of one. If the vote from that single ballot is in favor of the district formation, the city council may consider approval of resolution number 9977, that's tonight's item. And, um, that would conclude my report, and Madam Clerk has the ballot.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Robert. So, um, at this time, this is the date and time for the public hearing on the proposed Prospect Ridge Lighting Landscape District. Ballots must be submitted by the close of the public hearing. For this application, there is only one owner, and thus only one ballot. The city clerk has that unopened ballot here at the dais. So at this point, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and direct the clerk to open the ballots. Just a little, not as many ballots.
Did you turn up the microphone to make as much noise as possible doing that? Okay, the suspense is killing me.
I want to make sure I read it. The one vote is in favor of the proposed new assessment. Therefore, a majority protest does not exist, and your council may consider approval of resolution 9977.
There's a lot of relief in the back of the room.
One of you guys signed that, right?
Okay.
I didn't know it was by secret ballot.
So with that, I will entertain a motion to move resolution number 9977.
I'll move the resolution.
Okay, resolution moved by Vice Mayor Howell, seconded by Councilmember Gaylord. Any other questions, comments? All right, please call the roll on that item.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes. And, uh, let's see, maybe we're wrong. Okay, next item, please.
Your next item is item 7C. This is resolution number 9980. This is, again, a resolution of the council authorizing the issuance of Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Special Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2017.
Right, Jim. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this public hearing is about a proposal to issue up to $30,500,000 in revenue bonds for CFD 19. Uh, the proceeds will be used to finance the acquisition of certain public facilities necessary for the development of CFD 19, to fund the debt reserve, and to pay, uh, certain costs of issuances. Uh, at your last meeting on July 11th, you approved the structure of this issuance and the form of various documents necessary for the sale of these bonds. Uh, the public hearing is on the public benefits, which we project are the efficient delivery of the public infrastructure to the service area, to service the area, um, the savings in effective interest rates, and therefore a reduction in charges levied, and the employment benefits from undertaking the project on a timely basis. Uh, after consideration of the public hearing, I would recommend adoption of resolution 9980, authorizing the issuance of Special Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2017.
Great, thank you, Jim. Questions for Jim before I open the public hearing? Okay, go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
You have no request to speak.
Okay, seeing no one moving forward here, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and.
I'll move the item.
Okay, so.
Second.
Resolution number 9980, moved by Vice Mayor Howell, and seconded by Councilmember Gaylord. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Howell?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes. All right, next item, please.
All right, your last item of business tonight is new business item 8A. This is resolution number 9973, a resolution to approve and adopt a citywide pay schedule as required by the PERS, or California Public Employee Retirement System.
Very good. Way to, way to define that acronym. So Jim, again.
Uh, CalPERS requires the city council to adopt a pay schedule, uh, that is publicly available and stands alone without reference to any other documents. That's what we're presenting with you tonight. Uh, the presented pay schedule is our latest schedule of all city positions. It's effective July 1, 2017. It reflects a 2.5% COLA for those bargaining units that, that were so negotiated. There are no salary changes associated to any employee as a result of this action. Uh, I'm also required by SB 1436 to orally report that with regard to oral, uh, local agency executives, there are no salary changes or changes in compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits. Salary schedules, except for the city manager, have been adjusted by 2.5% at the maximum of the range, but no local agency executive salary was changed because of this increase. In regards to the city manager position, uh, which is set separately by the city council, the amount listed is the amount approved by the city council on November 8th, 2016. And I would recommend your approval of resolution 9973.
All right, appreciate you complying with the laws, as dry as that gets.
Yeah, sorry about that.
So, so any questions for Jim, this item? Okay, any requests to speak on this item under new business?
None.
Okay, so with that.
I will move the resolution to keep CalPERS happy.
Okay, resolution number 9973, moved by Vice Mayor Howell.
Seconded.
And seconded by Councilmember Sheldon. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Howell?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes. All right, right into city manager reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of updates on some, uh, two of my favorite events in Folsom. I sound like a broken record, because I say this every year, about National Night Out, which this year is August 1st. And if you haven't participated in National Night Out, uh, and you'd like to know more about it, I'd encourage you to email Jessica Hess, who is our Neighborhood Watch Coordinator. Um, National Night Out is an opportunity for all of our Neighborhood Watch groups to, to gather their neighborhoods together and entertain visits from the Folsom Police Department, Folsom Fire Department, and other city officials, so that we can all join together, get to know each other a little bit better, talk about how to make Folsom a great place, and how to continue making it better every year. And, uh, it's very, very exciting, and I get out there every year. I missed last year, unfortunately, due to some family obligations, but every year, uh, it is a great opportunity to get out, meet your neighbors, meet representatives from the city, and, uh, learn more about what's going on with each other and with this great town that we live in. And, uh, you can reach out to Jessica at 351-3409, or at jhess@folsom.ca.us. And so please do get involved in Neighborhood Watch and prepare for National Night Out.
Are we meeting at the usual location for that?
I don't know. I believe so.
Police chief is saying yes. Okay.
Yes.
Secret location, we know where that is.
Thank you, chief.
There will be hot dogs.
The other event, um, is Community Service Day, which, uh, just has grown and grown and grown over the years, and has just turned into this absolutely extraordinary way for those that are inclined to come out and help their city. This year, um, we have 45-plus projects. We're expecting several thousand volunteers. This is a great opportunity, that if you have an inclination to give back to your community, that we have knocked down just about every single barrier to you doing so, other than the rolling up your sleeves and getting out there and doing something. So lots of projects. We've got over $100,000 in cash and in-kind contributions donated by key members of the community to get out and get a lot of great stuff done in this community. Uh, that includes food drives, uh, we have neighbor-helping neighbor projects, we'll beautify some schools, we'll clean up some wetlands, we'll, um, uh, we'll, uh, do, and many, many other cleanup and landscape and gardening projects throughout the city. Um, and, uh, you can see, if you go out to the city's YouTube page, you can see a promotional video and some great excitement from last year's event, uh, that should get you, um, very motivated. So, very happy to be hosting Community Service Day again this year. It is, um, September 16th, Saturday morning, and we'll all meet for breakfast out at Lakeside Church and get ready, get everybody fueled up, and get ready to get out there and get a lot of good projects done, so.
Fantastic, great plug.
With that, good evening.
Great plug for great project. Thank, thank you, Everett. Ernie, you got anything this evening?
Just, uh, want to comment on the fireworks. I know from the FAA portion of the youth groups, it's another very good year. And, uh, hopefully the fires were small, if at all. And, um, now it's a matter of just tying up all the ends.
All right, good, good luck with that, Ernie. Thanks again for all your work on that. Uh, Roger, anything to say?
No, I'm okay.
Just a question for staff. Is the Mayor's Cup on September 15th this year?
Mm-hmm.
I, I think, I think it is, but.
Because they bumped us. I can't believe the golf course bumped us by a week.
I think we try and hit the, is it the third?
No, normally it's the last, the last weekend in September, because it's my birthday. Okay, which is unusual. So for people that are watching this that haven't seen any announcements yet, I'm assuming it's not yet full. But if people are interested in playing the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament, it's a, it's a great fundraiser, a great fundraiser, and a really nice way to spend, um, Friday afternoon.
Great.
And, you know, the usual, please drive carefully. Um, stop signs mean actually stop all the way. That means when your odometer goes all the way to zero.
Okay. All right, thank you, Carrie. And, uh, everything I had on my list here was mentioned by my colleagues, so I will adjourn the meeting at 8:14. Good evening, everyone.